Fishkill Planning Board meeting will now come to order. Could I have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Steve Gaiswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
Ed Mielsche.
Craig Smith.
Jason Pereskeva.
If everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on March 19th and one on April 16th. And again, depending on the volumes on our agenda or the need, we can always schedule a second meeting in each month if needed. And we have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. I think we have quorums for both. Okay, for November 20th, I had myself, Jason, Michael, Steve, and John Eichman were present. Do I have a motion to approve the November 20th minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, any abstentions? Ed and Craig are abstaining. Thank you. All right, and the second item is the December 18th minutes. Uh, let's see, it looks like myself, Jason, Michael, Stephen, John, and Ed were all present. So do I have a motion to approve the December 18th minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, any abstentions?
Greg.
Greg's abstaining, okay. Great, thank you. All right, that catches us up on minutes. So the first item on our agenda is an extension of final approval for Fian subdivision. And I think members of the board, Michelle had shared with us, come on up. Michelle had shared with us that we have a slightly new format to our agendas for 2019. Hopefully provides a little bit extra information, both for us as board members and for the public, to see what's being requested. And I know we had, the last time we saw the Fian subdivision, we had asked, we've given you a 90-day extension, asked your professionals just to provide us with an update and say whether or not any of the laws would affect the subdivision today, if there'd been any law, legal changes or zoning changes. So, Michelle, we have that, we received that letter. Were there any significant changes to note? Okay, were there any changes to note? I don't, I don't think there were. Okay. Right, so we're requesting a one-year extension from, do we, and Jeanie, I'm sorry, do we have the current expiration date? Because I think we provided an extension of 90 days at the last time we saw this. I can't remember what the meeting date was.
It was in December.
In October, October of 16.
Yeah, but it was, it was on just at the end of last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was roughly the 20th of November, right around that.
20th of November?
Yeah, because it was 90 days ago. So it was the third Tuesday in November.
Okay. So, Tom, from an extension standpoint, are we, do we extend from November's date or do we extend from today's date?
Well, you could do it retroactively and do it in two or three 90-day extensions, which the state law allows you to grant multiple 90-day extensions.
Let's take it for a year.
But there's a year sitting on the table.
That'd be four, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Usually we just make it a year. Are you saying we should be, we should be approving four consecutive 90 days?
The expiration would be four 90-day extensions.
What was it, a year and a half? How many would it be?
New year, slightly revised. As long as it, so, but, but again, Tom, we, we gave a 90-day extension roughly 30 days ago, so can we approve four additional 90-day extensions this evening?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve four additional 90-day extensions for this applicant?
Still moved.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for everything. I certainly hope to get it done a lot sooner than that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay. The next item on our agenda are a couple of discussion items. Uh, the first one is the Sloop Brewery at the I Park.
Good evening, Chairperson Guy and members of the planning board. My name is Dan Penessi and I am general counsel to the applicant, I Park East Fishkill LLC. I have with me here tonight Jared Schlosser, who is our project manager. And Jared handles all of our applications that we will be submitting to the town.
Okay.
Tonight, we are here to rectify a handicapped ramp and security fence that was installed within subdivided Lot 7 in this subdivision. And we're here to answer any questions you may have and hopefully to gain approval for this minor subdivision site plan application.
Okay. So I guess the first thing, the first question I have is, my understanding is, I think the fence is already installed and the ramp has, there's a temporary ramp there, but the final ramp is not yet installed?
That's correct.
As far as the location of that ramp, it's, it meets all ADA requirements? The ramp itself is, the final ramp will be ADA compliant, I'm assuming?
That's correct. So there is a temporary wood ramp installed in that exact location. We will be installing the final ramp. I believe we submitted the specification for it, but it'll, it's actually been delivered and we're awaiting installation pending this approval.
Okay.
And yes, the fence has been installed.
And the fence that forced this change is not your doing? That's correct?
Well, we've been asked to, because of the nature of the sloop tenancy and the other operations on site, we've been asked to install the fence for security reasons.
Okay. That was the key, it wasn't your idea. Okay.
Michelle, this is the, this is the, is this the final plan or the existing site?
This is the final plan.
Final, okay.
This dotted square is, that's where the proposed changes are. And the ramp is there. Do you see the dotted lines? And that's the fence.
Okay. And just, I'm, I'm assuming this is the closest we can be to your ADA parking spaces? And there's, again, you're meeting all your curb cut requirements and everything for those as well for access to the ramp?
Yeah, that site, that particular lot is about 100 acres with in excess of 3,600 parking spaces on it.
I'm just asking whether your ramp is located in close proximity to the existing ADA spots for this particular business?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right. I'm confident there's extra parking. All right. Any other questions or comments from board members? Michelle, anything we need to add?
Um, the only thing is that we've asked, the, the building department is currently looking at the plans for the ramp, just to find out whether or not there's any sort of weight requirement on them. There was a concern expressed by someone that if, you know, for instance, it's, it is a brewery and maybe if people go out and like linger outside or something, there could be more than the number of people than they were originally intending to be on that ramp. So they're just doing some, they're looking at some measurements to make sure that that's, that's going to meet all the requirements. And if it doesn't, they may have to rope it off or do something, you know, have somebody out there to sort of monitor what activity is out there.
But what's the maximum height of that ramp? I don't, it didn't look like it.
No, it's not very high, it's not very high. It's just a matter of whether or not it has a maximum number of people that can be on at any given time.
Right, it's a building.
Yeah.
The, we did get the plan review and we will be submitting tomorrow a letter from MA Day Engineering PC responsive to the, the couple items that were raised by the building department.
Okay, great.
Specific to, to the loads for the ramp.
So that, so basically, once you guys approve the site plan, then they can go ahead and install the, the ramp?
Okay, do we need to make it subject to the review of the capacity of the ramp or anything like that?
No, that's a building permit issue, so I don't want to administer the.
I just want to make sure if we're asking for a motion.
Correct.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion, I'm sorry, first, do we agree this is a minor modification to the site plan? It feels like it is, so.
Absolutely, I guess, sure.
Okay. Do I have a motion then to approve the minor modifications, including both the security fencing and the handicap ramp for Sloop Brewery at I Park?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Taylor Ray, also on for discussion at 1559 Route 82.
Long time no see.
Did you miss us?
We all know this one. Taylor Ray behind Florrie's Mobile on 82. As understood, the applicant performed some improvements to the site without planning board approval, so we're here tonight to beg for forgiveness in this and obviously come up with a plan that removes those improvements from the buffer area along to the conic and pushes them in a southerly direction toward the covered bridge subdivision entrance. So, and I think in our response or our application, we said we'd return the site to its approved site plan condition in the spring when weather gets a little bit better and we can replant some trees and reestablish the parking area.
Brian, was it ever paved? It wasn't, was it? There was just stone put down, right?
Well, there's, there's stone there now, I believe, right?
Okay, so it's not, it's not going to be like chopping up pavement?
No, we're just going to return it to its grassed state, reinstall the curbing and any fencing that was in that location. And obviously, the trees would be reinstalled or replanted. The, the applicant would like to expand the dentist use on site. Obviously, we'll have to go through the Board of Health as it results to capacity of water and sewer. We've initiated that process. We submitted a floodplain development application to the building department. Going through Morris', not Morris, but CPL's letter and Rick Witt's letter, there's some cleanup items that we have to address, but I think at the end of the day, we can install the parking area toward the south without any major impact to the floodplain area. So, with that being said, we're going to.
Without any major impact or without any impact?
Any impact.
Okay.
Let's use the right terminology.
Okay, I just want to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So, we'll, we'll get you that information in our next submission, but overall, the comment letters are, are right on point where they need to be and we'll address as, as required.
Okay, Michelle, are we confident we know what the parking count needs to be for the revised use?
Yeah, so there's 9,000 square feet of, we, basically, the entire building is medical dental, so I've parked it at one, one space for every 150 square feet, which requires, I think, 60 spaces, and they have 61 with the new spaces.
With the new space, okay.
So they're getting rid of a few of the existing spaces to, to install the parking lot, so there's like a total of 14 is being added, but they're losing five, so it's a net of nine spaces. And that, and there's 52 existing without the six spaces that they created with the gravel area, so that means there's 61 spaces in total.
So removing the gravel area, losing four or five spaces to create the new area, we end up with a net?
Of nine.
Of nine, okay. All right.
Sounds like good math to me.
There you go. So, Brian, one of the issues that I could foresee was people were saying, well, if you are coming down Cranberry Lane and all of a sudden it, there's more cars right there. But I see there's like a landscaping thing and all that, I mean, I, you know, without the elevation map, I mean, is that going to become like, hey, where did all these cars come from that are now sitting there?
Right, and we, we, when talking to Scott and Michelle at our pre-application meeting, because we don't want to have an impact, obviously, to the floodplain area, the parking is going to be recessed down further, so we don't have a volumetric increase in the floodplain area. We're going to stagger pine trees offset around that parking area and, and do our best to, to fill in any voids in that area. Obviously, I'll go over the landscaping plan with Michelle to make sure that, you know, we address any issues as it relates to screening. But the idea is to recess it down into ground, so it'll actually be probably three or four feet lower than the covered bridge road, because that is up higher.
So, so you don't think people will be driving along and suddenly, hey, where did all these cars come from?
No, I don't, I don't think it'll be, and once the trees are established, you know, I think we're providing six, six to seven-foot tall pine trees staggered.
And they're set back, it looks like probably 20 feet?
Correct.
Michelle, is that on the plan now? Have you looked at that planting and does it look sufficient?
He's got a row of, proposed row of landscaping. It's hard to tell right now because I don't know what's there existing, because it's the winter time, I don't know what will fill in. I mean, it's the worst-case scenario is right now and it's pretty open, you can see the road. But I think if they stagger and fill in that area, it, it should be, I mean, you can see into the site currently anyway, it's just that now the parking lot's going to be about, I don't know, probably 50 feet closer to the edge of the, edge of the property than it was.
Okay, but still meeting any required setback and sufficient space to add the screenings? We're not concerned in that perspective? Okay. Okay. So, Brian, you said you have a couple of things that you're going to address through the flood, floodplain letter and Michelle's and CPL's comments?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll revise and resubmit, I'll probably even reach out to Michelle if we want to take a trip out there and look at screening, just to put an eye on it, so we're on the same page. But, you know, the, the intent is to resubmit and address all the, the comments that were brought up.
Okay. Okay. I'm assuming we need to see this at least one more time before we can schedule it for a public hearing? I'm assuming it requires a public hearing because of the change to the, to the site and the change in use, is that correct?
I believe that that was the advice that we received from, or at least that the town engineer really wanted to see a public hearing on this because of the potential for the impact to the neighbors. I don't know that we, I mean, I don't know that we need to necessarily see it another time before then, I think we could probably schedule a public hearing today.
Your changes are going to significantly alter what your current drawings are?
No.
Nope. And, and really, the only potential issue is the, the visibility of the cars coming in.
Correct.
Even though theoretically, I mean, how long were the other spots there?
No, they weren't on that side, that side was.
I know, I know, but how long were they there?
The, the rest improvements or the parking lot itself?
The naughty spots, how long were they?
Only a couple of months.
Okay, so, okay, so it's not like, it's just a little shift, okay.
There had been, in the original approval, there had been a buffer mandated by the planning board between the subdivision and it ends where the parking lot's going to be. So, so the views from any individual homes, I'm fairly confident will be screened completely by the, the existing buffer. It's just the, the subdivision roadway will now be able to see.
The drive is going to see more parking, okay. What about, Michelle, the landscaping on the restore, restoration part where the gravel is now?
So, it, it's pretty clear, you can see what the existing or the original landscaping was from an aerial, the old aerial shows it pretty well. So, we're, we are trying to replant that exact screening because it is visible right now from the Teconic Parkway. I actually went on the ramp, I went on the ramp and you can see directly in.
Okay.
So we're trying to, to screen it the way it had been.
Okay. That's one of the things you'll change, you're going to have the, whatever the screening's going to be, okay.
Yep, we'll match it and the intent is to do both actions at the same time.
All right. You have about a week if you wanted to be on March 19th to get notices out, but we would also need your plan within, what, about two weeks to have it in in time?
That's fine.
For the public hearing, okay. Does the board have any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to schedule this for public, uh, sorry, the Taylor Ray site plan? And do we need to, is it a change of use as well?
It's not a change of use, there's medical and dental in there, they're just adding some dental chairs.
Okay. All right, so to schedule the Taylor Ray site plan for public hearing on March 19th?
Still moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a town board referral for the special permit for senior independent living. Michelle, can I ask you to give us an overview of that for us?
Sure, sure.
If I, excuse me, Chairman Jay, member of the planning board, my name is Charlie Martabano, I'm the attorney for the project. A member of our team has not yet arrived, I didn't know that you'd be going so fast through the agenda, so could you go on to the next item and then when we have the rest of us here, we can proceed?
Okay, just so you know, we're not opening for public comment on this tonight, so.
No, we're part of the presentation, it's on for both. It's on for sketch plan and for comments.
Okay.
So I think the thought was to combine both.
Ah, gotcha, I'm sorry, I did not, I forgot, I didn't flip the page.
Not a problem.
That's fine, we can go on to the next one, that's fine.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, so, Michelle, the second item for the town board referrals is our special permit for Hopewell Hamlet and Route 52 corridor revitalization.
Correct, and, and you guys have seen this all, this one before, there has been a couple small changes to it. First of all, it's, it's now a special permit, just so that we have more control for exactly where the housing would land. And then we've extended the boundaries from, along Route 82 from Trinkle Lane to basically Orchard Place, which is just before the bridge, for those of you that don't know. And then also, we're adding the 376 corridor, basically from Fishkill Road through to the rec center. And I do have a map that I printed, if anyone wants to take a look at it. But those are, and it's, it's pretty much the frontages of those roads, and then they have to meet the special permit conditions in order to receive the special permit, which will allow residential above ground floor commercial.
Okay. Were there any other changes? I know it says it was revised in December.
That's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right. I know.
I'm sorry, you know, the more times we read this, all of a sudden, where it says, you know, these things will come in before us and it says, if they meet all of the conditions of the general conditions. When it says general conditions, does that mean verbatim of, because I, you go through and there's like 42 different clauses that it says, it has to do this, it has to do this. I mean, are we really going to be that restrictive of this? Or will there be like a, you know, it meets 38 of the 42, therefore, that the planning board should look at the other four and say, does this still keep with the spirit of this?
I think the planning board has discretion to waive some of the, some of the requirements if it's good site design.
Okay.
But the idea is, the hope, anyway, is that the, the, but the buildings will be constructed so that the ground floor is really conducive to retail and access, pedestrian access and walkability, so that's the goal.
I understand, and that, you know, but it, but then it gets down to the very stipulation. Let me ask you a question, though, is, will it make it in here if it doesn't apply, you know, meet all 42?
Well, actually, you usually, if someone doesn't meet all the criteria except for it, they go to the zoning board to get a variance.
That was.
So that, that's always available on any.
Okay, because that's not specifically stated.
Town board hasn't limited that authority here.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's limited it?
Well, the town board, when it creates a special permit, can specifically provide that certain conditions cannot be modified.
Okay.
And then you're locked into it, but in this case, they have not done that. So if there's a dimensional, they, they don't have the distance between a building, whatever, then the planning board can refer them to the zoning board to get relief.
Okay. Thank you, that was the key, that there would be some leeway in this, because, again, I, I think we all agree, we want to see this happen.
Right.
Michelle, I know that we had provided some feedback previous to this. Do you have what you need for a comment letter to come from the board back to the town board?
Yes, what I'll try to do is tomorrow, when I'm here, I'll write up the comments and send it around to everybody.
Okay, so if anybody has any final comments on this, I know it's slightly revised, please make sure you get them over to Michelle tomorrow. I know a few of you copied me as you shared your comments and it's much appreciated. Any other questions or comments tonight? Okay. Are we ready to go back to the special permit for independent living or are we still waiting?
We are.
Excellent, all right. So, we'll go ahead, we have, we have a sketch plan review as well as a draft of a special permit for indep, special permit for senior independent living on our agenda tonight, item 4A and item 5B. So, we'll go ahead and if you want to give us an overview of the project, and then we'll have Michelle give us an overview of the law.
However you want to do that, that's fine. If we want to do the project first, that would be great. I'll introduce Jeff Cantelmo and Don Petracola.
Mike McCormick.
Mike McCormick, I brought you a dog, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
In any event, let's, will we put them, the boards up? You're somewhat familiar with this site, it was before you, before, on another application, but now we wish to make use of it for the senior independent living. Senior being defined as people 55 and older. I mentioned to my daughter what I was doing tonight, she's 14 years old, and she said, well, what are seniors? And she, I said, they're people 55 and older. That makes me, I guess, an ultra senior, so, in any event, she, she got a kick out of that, thinking that this is what dad is going to retire to. But in any event, we believe there's a need for this, we've talked to it with the members of the town board, they've indicated that people are looking for an opportunity to have an apartment if you want to sell your house and go to a situation where you don't have all the burdens and impositions of a house. That's what we're trying to develop here. I'm going to ask Jeff to walk you through our proposed site plan, if you would. Let's go.
Good evening, Jeff Cantelmo from Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. Also here this evening is Kathleen Schneider from our office, she's a project landscape architect on the project. The team of Kathleen and I have been before your board before, and we were here several years ago on the, on this exact piece of property, if you recall. We, we had a workforce housing proposal, so we're very familiar with the property, we're very familiar with the constraints, and we're excited that Mr. Segretti has brought what we think's a great proposal for the site. As you recall, the site is on Route 82, just to the west of the railroad crossing in Fishkill Road. It actually is in the R1 zoning district, but right across the street from us to, to the west is the B1 zoning district, so we're very close to the business district. If you recall, the, the property on the south side is bounded by the railroad tracks. Along the tracks, there are two pockets of DEC wetland, which have been delineated, they sit topographically quite a bit lower than the site. So the developer part of the site, which sits up along the frontage on Route 82, is very clear, and I do believe that the board is very familiar with the property, having seen a lot about it. So, knowing a lot about the, the wetlands, the floor and fauna, the traffic, all, all of the issues that were studied with previous applications has allowed us to quickly assess the site for the proposed use as senior independent living as an apartment and rental market rate complex. If you recall with the last application, we went through quite a bit of analysis to pick the right spot for the entrance to the site, based on site distances, based on DOT requirements, based on concerns by neighboring properties. So we've selected that same starting point, which is where we come off of Route 82. The site itself will meet all of the requirements that have been established in the proposed law relative to coverage setbacks, et cetera. It's a 90-unit complex, we've provided for, I believe it's 147 parking spaces, which is a little over one and a half per unit, which we think is very generous based on other similar projects that we've worked on. The property and building is looped by a service road and parking area. We do have some recreational amenities within the building that Mike will talk about, but outside the building, we do have a pool area, I have a barbecue, some sitting areas and similar amenities. You recall, there is a older home on the property, which was the subject of some concern in earlier applications to remain. Mr. Segretti has remained committed to preserving that and hopefully for some type of community use. There might be opportunities there for different groups in the, in the community. All of the functions for, for the apartment complex will be contained within the apartment building, their offices, everything will be in their own building. So, so the home can be utilized by a community group.
And I was just going to jump on that same point. When this property did receive some treatment for other zoning assisted living, it meets the eligibility requirements for that, it meets the requirements for congregant care facilities, we made a representation to the town that we knew that that home was, it's not, I don't believe it's of historical significance, but let's say of interest. And so Mr. Segretti, as Jeff pointed out, committed to keeping that as part of this. However, it will not be, and again, as Jeff pointed out, part of the apartment complex, we're going to dedicate it to community purposes, working with the town and groups to be able to utilize that for their functions, and we've committed to do that.
Okay.
Sorry, Jeff.
Just to wrap up on the site, you know, we do have some stormwater practices cited in key locations surrounding the site. And one of the things that we, we want to continue to develop, that we've talked about, again, in a previous application, was creating some berms and landscaping along Route eighty-two, so that the, the project can be buffered and actually create a very aesthetic frontage along there and screen some of, some of the parking and some of the buildings. So we're going to be working on that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike McCormick from Liskemack McCormick and Vors. And Mike, Mike's firm and Mike are the architect of record, and talk about the building.
Good evening. Michael McCormick, Liskemack McCormick and Vors, here to talk about the building itself. Don Petracola, my associate who's in charge of the project, could not be here this evening, so I'm going to try to fill in, hopefully pretty well. I'll see. But essentially, the building itself, as you can see from the site plan, and then from what I'll show you, is a three-story building. Three-story building that encompasses the property, and what it will entail are units on all three floors, and then it will also have a amenity spaces throughout the building. It's independent living, so nice thing about this is that it's for residents that are usually in the area, that want, are downsizing and want, need a place to live, which is really, really good for any community that we found. We've done, you know, a few of these around the Hudson Valley, and they really are real complimentary to the properties and the towns that they go into.
And, and I'm sorry, you said that there were units on all three floors. Are any of them multi-level units, or are they all single-level units?
They're all single-story, so they're flat-style units, because, again, it's for seniors, and to limit the number of stairs is really a good thing.
And I was going to say, I assume you have some elevators to get to the third floor?
Yeah, there's an elevator in the building, yeah. And as I know now, I'm a senior, so, yeah, stairs are not so good.
And how, what's the demographics of the number of one- and two-bedroom?
Yeah, they break down to pretty much a sixty-forty split. That's what we look at, look at. So, and that's under the works, but sixty-forty is typically what we look at, twos and ones and things like that. That's what the good ratio is for, for this type of living.
Sixty percent being two-bedroom and forty being one-bedroom.
Yeah, and enhanced. So we have, can I move this? So what I'll do is, oh, that's the units. I'm looking to see what you have up on there, and it doesn't match this. Should put it back. Thank you, Charlie. So you can see, these are the type units, they're two-bedrooms, one-bedrooms, and again, two-bedrooms, different sizes, give some, you know, variation, which is really nice. So when someone comes and looks at these units, you want some variety in terms of the unit types, so that it's not all homogeneous. It's really something that is really, you know, complimentary for what they're looking for. So again, it's, it's just a matter of how you position these. But you can see that they're really nice units, they're generous in terms of their sizes. They're not small, but they're not overly large. They're, they're something that seniors tend to liken, or gravitate towards. And then.
And these are apartments, not condominiums or co-?
They are apartments.
They're apartments, okay.
Rental apartments and market value rental apartments.
Yes.
Okay.
Save the elevation to last.
That's fine.
So I don't know if this one's up on the slide. No, there we go. So this is, you can see, well, these are graphic representations of the fitness room, lobby atrium, the great room, you know, and the movie theater. And we want to have a variety of spaces for communal living, because you have a lot of people in one place, so you want to give them places to go to. Theaters, we find, are very much in demand for these types of facilities, where people can come and, and watch together, be it in a family or bring their family into the facility proper, or just, you know, amongst the residents themselves. Of course, fitness is big these days. Everyone has to stay healthy. So you want to have fitness room. Lobby atrium is a very welcoming place, double-height space. It's really something that really is complimentary, again, to the people that are living there. It's like the front door of, of someone's home. And then, of course, you have great rooms. The great rooms are places of gathering, so you want, there's several around the facility that will be there, so that it's just, you know, you want to get out of your apartment and talk to people, and that's very important. You want people that come together in different spaces, not just stay in their apartment proper. You want them to really gravitate towards each other. It's, again, it's a community, and when you look at it, it's like a big house, and people live in this big house. So this is the, the thought in terms of the front elevation along the roadway, and you can see that we have very much an articulated building that really fits in what, what we see as, what we see in East Fishkill proper. So we see different elements of gables and, and such, and different various materials as brick and siding and shutters, really, that really hone in, in terms of a really nice place in the world. It's not just a plain, jained building. Really has some really nice articulation, nice materials, something that really, really complimentary to the area and to the, the town of East Fishkill.
Okay. Michelle, I think let's have you, because I think, now that we sort of have a feel for what's being proposed, if you can walk us through the special permit, the proposed law. Obviously, we're seeing a couple of things that are different from prior, prior things we've seen at this site. I see it as three-story. I see that there's, you know, one building as opposed to multiple buildings, so just if you could walk us through the permit.
Right. So currently, there is a, a special permit that allows assisted living and congregate care, and this is senior independent living, so that's one different.
Is this a revision to that, then, or is this its own?
It's its own section.
Okay.
So it's a special permit that'd be granted by the planning board, first of all. The requirements are that the site has to be located within a zoning district except an I-zone. It has to be within one mile of the intersection of Route eighty-two and three-seventy-six in the Hopel Hamlet. That's to provide services close by to the folks that would live in the facility. They have to have municipal central water and sewer. And there's a minimum permitted lot area for this type of use, which is five acres. There is a density of ten apartment units per acre, and they, there's required building setbacks of fifty feet for a front yard, thirty for a side, thirty for a rear. There's one parking space required for every apartment, plus there is also visitor parking And there is also a caretaker's residence proposed, and off-street parking.
Wait, that's part of the special permit?
Um, yeah, well, there, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's a, there's going to be parking provided also at the house that.
Well, we're trying to work on it. We, we don't know yet what the use is going to be there, but we'll have more than sufficient parking spaces for it. To explain why you see the caretakers is that we modeled this after the code of the town itself. We did have these types of eligibility requirements and permitted accessory uses when it came to assisted living, workforce housing, and congregate care facilities, so we modeled it along the same lines. We thought that that would be the best way to do it, to pick up on what the town has found to be appropriate before. That's why you see it there. In this case, this, this will not have a caretaker's cottage in it. Originally, it was thought that when they did the assisted living facility, that the house might become that, because, again, we wanted to preserve the house, because that's what the town wanted us to do. But it could be a use here, but instead, we wanted to dedicate that to community use. So it's, it's a possible accessory use, but it doesn't mean it has to be.
And I'm sorry, with all the site plans, I haven't seen, where is the house that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That actually?
Okay, if you take a look at, at the right side?
So it is that, okay.
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Okay. So it would be behind, where, on the, on the frontal picture that we're looking at, it's behind the, the left wing out there.
Right there.
Okay.
Michelle, if you, just go ahead and.
So there's land, there's landscaping requirements, and I think that's pretty much all of the major requirements that are currently in the law right now.
Okay, so then, is it allowing three stories?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that, if you saw that. And then, is it ten units per buildable acre or per acre?
Per acre.
Okay. Is that our typical?
Well, this is a, a proposal for amendment to the zoning ordinance, so the town board is free to create it.
No, I know, but usually the planning board provides feedback to anything proposed. I think it's, it's sent to us for.
Well, I think we have both in the ordinance for densities. Some go by the gross acreage, some go by.
I, I believe assisted living and congregate care is by the gross acre as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Tom, the, at one point, I seem to recall, the development that was planned at the intersection of two sixteen and fifty-two, one of the iterations of that was supposed to be senior housing. How is, and there were some, I, what were the, I can't remember, what were the issues that were raised relative to that, other than the fact that it was out in the middle of nowhere?
In there at fifty-two and Palin?
Uh, no, fifty-two and, and two sixteen.
The original Montage proposal.
Oh, oh, yes. This Montage.
Yes.
Yes. So Montage was asked the town board thirteen years ago to modify the zoning ordinance to allow the clustering of all the units to the front of the property, and modify, and they weren't age-restricted, though, as far as I remember. And the town board didn't do that at the time, so that, right now, is still pending as a hundred and.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-two lot subdivision.
Okay. So that's, there's none of the, that's not in any way applicable to this? Okay.
But I think that raises a good point. I think, Michelle, you said it needs to be within one mile of eighty-two and three-seventy-six. Is that correct? So do we know how many other properties would be able to meet this requirement of being?
Yeah, they, they, we looked at that originally.
That will be as part of the secret review that the town board will do. The, the gross number of parcels that this could be applicable to will be identified and generically analyzed.
Assuming it's greater than one, that's all I'm asking. Yeah, okay.
Oh, yes, about two or three.
Yes.
Okay.
That are theoretically possible. I mean, they would have to be.
Well, I mean, we, we do have a couple other business centers within town, so you might ask a question, do we say within a mile of eighty-two and three-seventy-six and maybe three-seventy-six and fifty-two, or something like, you know?
Well, the only, the only restriction really is with the public water and sewer, since we don't have that available.
Okay.
And the town board has some reluctance of allowing, in the future, the private sewage disposal corporations, because we've had so many problems within the town of the ones that we have.
But theoretically, at the point where municipal utilities are available.
You could modify it then.
Just because right now, it's going to limit to where there's municipal available, it doesn't mean it couldn't be expanded to other areas. Okay. Do the planning board members have any other questions on the proposed special permit law itself? Okay, we have it, we should review it, just like we would any other referral from the town board to provide our comments back to Michelle. And Michelle, I don't know what the town board timing is on this, but I want to make sure we have an opportunity to send comments back.
This is not on the, this is not on the agenda until.
I think the timetable would be in March, they'll circulate for lead agency and set a public hearing.
Okay. Are we too early for our comments, then?
March or April.
Am I? Are we too early for our comments, then? Do we put this back on?
Well, I mean, you have loads of time to do it, because the.
Okay.
Comments have to be received by the town board by the close of their public hearing, which may be April or May.
Okay. And the, just, and I'm sorry, I have one more question on the, the special permit. You mentioned you're going to change the purpose of the house on the site from caretaker to community-type use. Michelle, is the special permit, it doesn't require a caretaker unit, right? It just allows a caretaker?
Permitted, except for you.
All right.
And maybe just to discuss that concept. The concept was, and the developers willing to preserve a building of historic interest.
Correct.
On the site, and that it's maybe modified a little bit internally, that would facilitate small community groups being able to use it for meetings, like Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, maybe the veterans, people like.
Is this something that would be, continue to be maintained by the owner, or turned over to the town?
I believe the concept would probably be, we would do some, as Tom pointed out, some interior renovations as part of the project as well, then turn it over to the town for its use, not with charge, of course, but through, probably pursuant to a long-term lease or something of that nature. And then the town, of course, can make it available to such community groups as appropriate. I do believe, we have discussed a place for veterans, but as Tom points out, it, it's going to be up to the town to do what they want to do with it.
I just want to make sure we talked to the right people about, you know, the increased maintenance, or, you know, the buildings and grounds.
Right. I mean, usually it's customary to be close.
The ongoing cost.
Developers, nice, they'll fix it, and they'll let us use it, but they don't want the liability. So what we usually do in these cases is we do a long-term lease for a dollar a year, and then the town assumes some responsibility and maintenance. That, we will spell that in agreement.
And you can assume that Tom came up with that rental, that, you know, we didn't have any real input in that, as I'm sure you realize.
I know you want a ten, so the bargain's down, but, you know.
And there may be some editing to Mr. Montalvo's.
He, he, he said he might go to ten dollars, so thank you for that suggestion, yeah.
All right.
Are there any questions that we can answer about the project itself?
I'm just curious. You mentioned that you've done other sites or other buildings like this in the area.
I think Mr. McCormick mentioned that, yes.
Can you mention a couple that I could maybe envision? There's one in Hyde Park right now that's being built. There's another one over in Orange County, and I can get you names, Steve, of where to go look. That's not an issue. Yeah. If you want to go take a look.
If you could provide a list to the planning office, that would be places that we might be able to visit, that would be great.
So you can see what they look like. No problem. I mean, the pictures are great, but if we could see. Yeah, you want to kick tires. Yeah. That makes sense.
And overall, I think that this is a great idea. I think the town could really benefit from it. Though one, I guess, question or concern I would have is, I, I would guess that many people would be walking back and forth between that complex and the town, and I'm not sure exactly how safe that would be right now. We would need to put some sort of, yeah, sidewalk or barrier or, you know, bike lane or something there.
I think it's, Tom pointed out, that'd probably be something that we do during the site plan process, talk about those types of issues. Okay, whether, but I'm sure that something like that will be discussed during that process.
So you are on for a sketch plan review, but it's not a full application before us. Is there any other questions you have of the board for your site plan process at this time?
No, I, I think that members of the team have some experience there, so we're looking forward to it.
Okay.
I had a question. In terms of procedure, is this going to go in parallel, or is this pretty much goes back to the town board, and then will come back to us once the town?
Uh, yes, it has to go to town board. We'd have to modify zoning. I think the concept might be that while that's going on, they may come in for further discussions with you to get some of the gritty, gritty resolved, in case the ordinance itself has to be modified for another.
This will continue to go in parallel, then?
Yeah.
I, I think it serves everyone's interest to do that, if we could do that. We'd appreciate the opportunity, even though the code may not yet be amended, it would be good to have some back and forth with you on the specifics.
Right. Typically, you know, once or twice at most with sketch plan, and then we need the full application for us to proceed into discussion. So, Mike, I would say as soon, as long as we have an application, we can start the discussion process. We just probably, depending on changes the town board might be recommending with the zoning and the permitting itself, you have to figure out whether you want to be in public hearing, not knowing what your final site plan might be, because it just delays your process.
Understood.
So that, we usually would just make sure that you accept the risk of, if you're proceeding with us in a process, it's going to cost you professionals and, and your application and everything, that you understand that it's still subject to the town board's decision.
We, we do understand that, but we're hoping that Tom will help move this forward quickly for us, so hopefully that won't be a problem.
No pressure, I mean.
His other career is a comedian.
Not, not well-paid, I point out, but all right. All right, great. Well, thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you and making this a reality.
Thank you.
Great.
Good luck.
Thanks so much.
Okay, the next item on, let me just make sure I didn't lose track of where we are on it. All right, the next item on our agenda is a sketch plan review for Farm Stores, East Fishkill, on Route three-seventy-six. Do we have anyone here for Farm Stores of East Fishkill?
Thank you.
Going once? Going twice?
Interesting.
Okay. Michelle, I think we'll move on. I'll call it one more time before we close out, but let's move on to our informational updates.
Sure.
We could, I think, are you, I know Scott's not here tonight, but are you able to just run us through these real quick?
Yeah, sure.
So, so maybe just as a premise, periodically, as the, as the planning board's professionals get ready for each of our meetings, the building department will sometimes come to them with them with items where they ask for either planning expertise, or opinions, and things like that, so we thought it might be helpful to start to share some of those things back with this board, they don't necessarily rise to the level of needing a planning application or something like that, but it may be decisions or recommendations that we've provided back to the building department, so we thought, we thought we'd use this forum to share that information, and sometimes it may be a precursor to an application in front of us, so I'll turn it over, Michelle, with that introduction.
Okay, so the first one is just refuse disposal enclosure, this is really simple, there was just a couple updates to the building code, and they wanted to make us aware that any refuse container that's closer than 10 feet to a building needs to be within fireproof, fireproofing, like a concrete block around it, and fencing, just kind of more substantial than we're typically seeing with just a fencer, so it was just a heads-up that if we see refuse containers close to buildings, we need to make sure we consider design for more fireproof container, and then Zion...
Before we leave, that one, it, when I went back and read it, and I apologize for not asking this upfront, was, it says the New York State Code, is the code really just, it has to be surrounded by, or is there like 30 pages of stuff?
There's a bunch of different things, but our fire inspector, we have a fire inspector that reviews everything, and it also depends on the type of use and a bunch of other things, so he kind of looks at it, but I think with the reason they brought it to our attention was because there's a section of our code that describes the fireproof enclosure that it needs to be in, so they were sort of questioning whether or not we needed to be more vigilant about the fireproofing, and we looked at that and said, no, it really, it relates to, because it refers you back to the building code, it relates to the building code, and what is required by the building code, and it just depends on the use and the size of the building, and all those kinds of things.
And I think where possible, we try to put it further away, but when it's going to be within...
Correct.
...that 10 feet.
Typically, we're pretty far away.
So if they put it further than 10 feet?
You don't have to have the same type of enclosure.
Because, again, the code, then, could be open up to broad range of subjectivity that...
Right.
We always hear horror stories about.
Right.
Thank you, okay.
But that's the New York State Uniform Code, that's designed by the state, forced on us to be implemented.
Understand.
If the town doesn't implement it the way it's written, then the town is fined and punished for not implementing it, so...
Understand, but same code, I've never heard anybody come in here and say, gosh, it's great to comply with the new codes.
And there is an appeals process, if a property owner thinks it's overly burdensome, et cetera, they can appeals to the Hudson Valley Regional Appeals Board and get the relief that they wish.
Or move their trash can.
Or move their trash can.
I don't think we've had that situation here in our town.
Can't imagine which one they're going to do there.
We shouldn't have that situation.
And then, sorry, Michelle, next one is Zion. And the next one is Zion Deli, which also was an application in front of the building department, and it's, used to be the Quick Stop, so everyone's familiar with that, and they basically were transitioning, they wanted to add a few more tables, or actually add tables into the, what is really a kind of a deli use, and kind of a small grocery, and as a result of contacting the county health department, they have a rule that if 50% of the foods that are proceeds from a business are prepared foods, then they sort of considered a restaurant use, and we were struggling with whether or not this was going to be sort of morphing into a restaurant, or kind of how to classify it, because the other issue was that they also asked to update their liquor license to allow them to serve open containers, they were allowed to sell, I guess what you would consider packaged alcohol, but they weren't actually serving open containers, and in this case, they wanted to actually be able to allow people to sit and drink at the tables if they wanted to, so we just were a little bit concerned that it was morphing more to a restaurant use, and we wanted to make sure that we were looking at the parking and all those kinds of things, it really is not, I mean, it's still very much a deli when you walk in, but we did speak with the owner and explained to him that if anything else changed, if they added any more tables, if they started serving at the tables, then really, probably, we'd need to look at it as a restaurant use, and they do have 25 parking spaces there, so in this case, we were lucky, they had plenty of parking, even to park it as if it were a restaurant, so we noted that in the file, and we're just making you aware that there's now tables there, and it's, and it looks to perhaps be morphing towards restaurant.
But at this time, didn't rise to the level of a change in use, so that's why it didn't come before us.
Correct.
So they're aware of the 50% level?
Yes, I spoke with him, and he said that he's actually trying to increase his sales of prepared foods, so that's why we all said, okay, then this is the way we're going to look at it, just to be on the safe side, then make sure you have enough parking, and they do have plenty of parking, and I think they have parking in the rear that they can use if they do expand.
So they would come back to us at some point that they began to approach 50% or something, okay.
Correct, and that was noted on their building permit that they got for the tables, so that we can enforce it if we need to, and then, we've decided that there's a lot of action happening at I Park, and we're, the building department and I are going there once a week, just to sort of get up to date on the applications that are happening there, and have a conversation with the folks from I Park, so we added this I Park Updates to our agenda, and I guess I'll let you talk about what's happening there, most recently, it's mainly building department, but it's also just to keep you informed of what's happening, because you guys might not even realize some of the uses that are back there, so we're trying to keep everyone informed.
Well, and ideally, I know we heard tonight, the handicap ramp and the fencing, but ideally, we would like to know about those types of changes before you've installed them, so this helps us stay a little bit better in touch, I think.
Absolutely, the good news, again, Dan Panesi for I Park East Fishkill, the good news is that we've had tremendous interest in leasing activity at the site, in the process of redeveloping this particular property, and with that comes lots of changes to the buildings, the historical use of these buildings isn't necessarily working for the new tenancies that we're having come in, so, and a good example is the fence and the handicap ramp, other examples could be loading dock changes, things outside a building that would change the way the exterior of the building looks, and although it's, you know, buried pretty deep into the property, we'll be submitting these minor site plan amendments, so what we'll try to do for each meeting is to provide kind of a look ahead of what we anticipate coming down with new tenants, or LOIs, letters of intent that we're signing with new tenants, just to keep you all informed, and we look forward to working with the planning board and with the town, we're happy to be here, and we look forward to bringing more businesses and more jobs to the site.
We're glad to hear you're getting activity there, that's good news.
Great, thank you.
Excellent.
How many new tenants do you have at this point?
We've got, we've signed leases with some of the existing operators at the site, and we've got six or seven new tenants, mostly food distribution and manufacturing uses to the south of the site, in this particular area where Slough is.
Great.
A couple of the new ones were Creepini, which is a crepe company, Country Produce, which is, I guess they do wholesale produce.
Yeah, wholesale produce.
They expanded Morgue, which is the syrup business that is there currently, and they've been doing really well, so they've been, they've been expanding into space, so those are the building stuff that we've been looking at most recently, I believe you're going to have soon an application before us to cut in a loading, sort of like, it's not really a loading dock, it's actually just to get equipment into the building, I believe, so we're not exactly sure if that's going to end up being a site plan change, it's a...
Or if it's just a minor temporary modification, then it's...
Exactly, so we're still, we need to understand whether or not they need to put any sort of pavement in or not, and we haven't quite figured that out yet, so that may or may not come to you, but...
It's exciting news, though.
Yeah, and I'm sure we'll be, it's a large property with, you know, lots of undeveloped plans, so I'm sure as we proceed and look at the site and continue planning, we appreciate all the work that this board did with the subdivision back in 2016, 17, in anticipation of the transaction with us, so, thank you, and I'm sure we'll be seeing quite a bit of you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you. Michelle, can we just make sure, I hear a few folks out in the lobby that Farm Stores isn't here?
Sure.
I just wanted, before we close out, I don't want to...
I'd also like just to update the board on the litigations.
Oh, thank you, Tom.
On Gasland Petroleum, as you know, there was a prior litigation against the amendment to the zoning ordinance that had been enacted, and what actually happened is that case has now been dismissed, and the finding is in favor of the town with respect to the validity of the zoning amendment, shortly after we received that, an Article 78 proceeding was filed, challenging this board's site plan approval of the facility, and currently, our responsive papers go in March, and we'll get a decision.
The basis for that challenge, Tom?
Well, they're questioning your secret review, the challenging about traffic, whether additional studies should have been done, et cetera, they do have some problems with it, is, it's only against the town, it's not against the property owner, and that could be a fatal defect, and so that's the threshold issues that we have to get through, so...
Okay, thank you for that update, yeah, progress at least, right? Michelle, was there anybody for Farm Stores?
No, no one's out there.
Okay, all right, we'll note that as possibly rolling over to next month, but not right tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.